Judy, if you'll take the call. And I'm going to roll into number two. And I make a motion to move the auditorium. And we'll be given a 15-minute recess looking for a second. Amber, second. Judy? Judy's in the hall.
Should I move it?
Yes.
Good one.
Yes.
Carter Gibson, yes. Will I?
Yes. I am 701.
We're going to be looking at the Oklahoma School Safety Protocols. That if you would like to follow along with that, that's A on one of our agenda items, you can go to the Oklahoma School Safety Protocols if you Google it, or you can go to the Oklahoma State School Board of Education, and you can find it and just search in Oklahoma School Safety Protocols. It's basically just a plan that does the counties and the colors of the counties. And we're going to talk about that tonight. And I did not run open up copies that you can follow along online. And if you need me to say that again, please let me know.
Form of entertainment tonight, but I'm glad you guys could make it. And welcome. It's 7:15. I'll call the meeting to order. Judy? And number three on the agenda item is the public participation part. And again, I'd like to just ask that if you do want to speak, that you sign in. And that's mainly so that we can get your name, address, phone number, email. And any questions that you do ask, they will be responded by email. This will not be a dialect between, or dialogue between the school members and the speaker. This is going to give you five minutes to speak. I know we originally told some people three minutes, and have to review our policy of supply. So you have up to five minutes. I would just ask that, you know, if you want to address the school board, that you address the school board as a whole and not single out an individual. I would ask that you not address an employee by name. People in the audience listening, I just ask that you give the person speaking all the respect. Give them the floor. This is a open meeting. It is not a public meeting. So if you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave. There will be no actions. And with your statements, please just keep to the agenda as far as items being listed on the agenda. And it's safe to say that a lot of people are here for the PPE part, and that covers that. So this isn't a five-minute rant where you can just go off-topic and complain about everything you could possibly think of in the lifetime of the school. So again, saying that, we're at the public participation part. We can go by the list. Judy, do you have some names filled out? And if you're not on that list and want to get it, get on the list. Just walk over to Judy and sign up. You can do that at any time. And who do we got first?
Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wyatt. Just so everybody knows too, I will try to be keeping time just so that keep it fair. And you can proceed whenever you're ready, Colby.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Colonel Colby Wyatt, commander of the 45th Infantry Brigade Combat Team. And just to give you a perspective on what that entails, it's 4,221 soldiers stretched from Lincoln, Nebraska to Ardmore, Oklahoma, with armories in between McAllister and Ene. The reason I wanted to speak tonight is I believe in my situation that I've been dealing with for the last month, parallels that of the Cherokee Public Schools. And I had a statement in this because my son is a junior here at the high school. I had to cancel training about three weeks ago. We had an annual training set for Fort Chappy, Arkansas, very rough and rigorous training that we had planned very well. But it was the outside enablers that I did not have control over that worried and kind of disrupted my plan. Our regular army unit that falls in under us, where they were coming from New Jersey, which at the time was a very hotbed. I also had DA civilians that were coming in that I don't have command over. And so even though I can order my soldiers to stay in the field, they can go in and out of Fort Smith, Arkansas, and Fort Chappy and eat wherever they want or do whatever they want to do, and then come back and interact with those soldiers. So I made the decision. It was my decision only. I had pressures from the Department of Defense. I had pressure from the Army and pressure from the National Guard Bureau to continue with the training. But I made the call to stop the training. And we focused more on a home Armory AT, our annual training, with limited field time. My current policy follows that of the recommendations from the Department of Defense, which is a very simple policy. It's part of our uniform now. We cannot enter an armory unless we have a mask on. And our temperature is taken at the door. And anytime we're in the hallways interacting with other soldiers, we have the mask on. But once we're in our offices and once we're in our classrooms and we maintain social distance, we get to take the mask off. Some soldiers elect to keep it on. Some soldiers get to take it off. Just to tell you what that's done, I started two weeks ago, and we have one more week left, with a little over 200 cases that were pending, that we were monitoring. I'm now down to 41. There are no cases that we can find where we transmitted COVID through the armories. It's all come from outside the armories. But I'm not here to talk about masks. I'm here to talk about leadership. The Army taught me 25 years ago the principles of leadership. There's 11 principles, but I think three are really key here tonight. So out of those 11 principles, number three is to seek responsibility and take responsibility for your actions. Number four is to make sound and timely decisions. And number five, which I believe is the most important, is to know your soldiers and look out for their well-being. I use those principles to guide me every day as I make tough decisions that affect all the soldiers that I have under my command. I do not have the luxury to spout off my own personal beliefs, nor do I have the luxury to use my political views to input into my decision. Because my decision comes down to one thing. And that's the responsibility and the safety of every soldier that I'm in command of. I use that single decision to make every decision that I make. Is it safe for my soldiers to do it? And what tools can I give them in order for them to survive on the battlefield? I accept full responsibility for all decisions that I make, no matter the outcome. So I want to wish you best wishes tonight and good luck with your decision. May it be... May it be timely. May you seek responsibility and take responsibility for your actions. But most importantly, may you know your students and look out for their well-being. Because that's what leaders do. I yield the rest of my time back to the floor. Thank you.
Heather Gatch.
This is Mike. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me first speak to you as Heather Gatch, the individual. You may have noticed that I'm wearing a mask. I don't want to wear this mask. But I also know that as someone who falls in the high-risk category, I have no choice. I spent my 21st birthday finding out results from a bone marrow biopsy. What I learned is that I didn't have cancer, but I likely have lupus. That diagnosis was confirmed only a couple of weeks later. For the last 14 years, I have had more medical procedures and medications prescribed than you may believe. I took massive doses of steroids and a chemo pill. My immune system does not function regularly on its own, let alone when I have a virus or infection. I did not ask to live my life with a chronic immune disorder, but it is the life that I have been given. Because of this, my family has been extremely cautious in the last five months. We don't go inside any public places without a mask on. We are not eating in restaurants. And we've even gone as far as disinfecting groceries before we bring them into our house. I have skipped get-togethers with friends that I very rarely have the opportunity to see. And my children have been limited on their activities as well. While some may accuse us of living in fear, that is simply not true. In 14 years, I have never, ever used lupus as an excuse or crutch. And in fact, many of you probably weren't aware that I haven't. There is a difference between living in fear and being cautious in protecting my health. Next, I would like to speak to you as Mrs. Gatch, a teacher in your school system. I'm walking back into my classroom where I will see around 85 students each and every day. For the last six years that I've taught in Cherokee, I have been 100% committed to my students and FCCLA members. When I have students on individualized education plans, I study those plans and know them front and back. When I know of students who don't eat outside of the school building, I make sure they have access to food. When there are students who don't have the clothing they need or the basic toiletries that they need, I make sure they have those items in hand. Each year, we are required to perform state mandated safety drills. When we have a tornado drill, I direct and lead my students to the shelter, but I am the last one in the door. When we have a fire drill, I direct and lead my students to our designated location outside of the building, but I'm the last one out the door. When we have an intruder drill, we lock ourselves in the room and proceed to a hiding spot that I will not disclose. Guess who is the last one in that spot? It's me. We then spend the next few minutes trying to be silent until we are given the all-clear. Once given the all-clear, we discuss what in our classroom we could use as weapons in case one day it's not a drill. This is the reality of a teacher in 2020. We do all of these things not because we are required to legally, but because almost all of us teach, because it's our purpose. Today, I'm speaking to you as an educated professional who has spent seven years to earn two degrees in education. I'm not speaking to you about what I want you to do. I'm speaking to you as someone who knows the ins and outs of how classrooms work. We practice drills for many different scenarios all year long, but we don't have time to do drills for COVID-19. We are living this, and we are the ones on the front line in the schools. I don't pretend to know medicine, or accounting, or plumbing. And I would never tell any of those professionals how to do their job or what's best for them. This is not about taking away rights from students. We have policies at stake. Students cannot come to school without a shirt. They can't wear a hat in the buildings, and they can't use their cell phones during school. An adult can't smoke a cigarette inside our building. This is an upsetting policy that protects students and staff members. I am standing in front of you as an immunocompromised teacher who sees 85 students each day in a classroom with round tables that cannot possibly accommodate social distancing. It is not practical or safe for my students to come back to school with zero safety precautions. Lastly, I would like to speak to you as Heather Gatch's parent. I have two children in our school system, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. My children have worn masks for five months if they go in any indoor public space. We have had hard conversations with them about the implications if they were to be diagnosed with COVID-19. They will both be a mask regardless of the decision made tonight. But I implore you to look at data and listen to medical professionals in regards to the susceptibility of children to this virus. As of today, 11.16%
The wait is time has expired. I'm sorry. I have to ask you stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do you have next?
Michelle Baldwin.
Michelle Baldwin?
Good evening. I will be reading a letter on behalf of Dr. Clay Reed. To whom it may concern, with the current COVID-19 pandemic, difficult decisions are having to be made as students return to school. While it may be exceedingly difficult to manage the risks and benefits of each of these choices, there are a few decisions that should be less controversial. One of these examples is mandating individuals to wear masks. By way of introduction, my name is Clay Reed. I grew up in Cherokee and graduated from CHS in 2009. I attended the local university at NWOHU where I obtained degrees in both chemistry and biology. I then attended the University of Oklahoma College of Medicine. I completed my internal medicine residency training at the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. Currently, I reside in Bethesda, Maryland, where I am completing my hematology and oncology specialization at the National Cancer Institute within the National Institutes of Health. During my recent time at the Mayo Clinic, I had the unique opportunity to be in charge of a COVID-19 hospital team, treat COVID-19 patients in the medical intensive care unit, and participate in extensive research regarding COVID-19. I have seen the spectrum of asymptomatic patients, mildly ill patients, and critically ill patients. While most do recover from COVID-19, I have unfortunately witnessed several patients succumb to the serious virus, particularly individuals with underlying lung disease like COPD or asthma, obesity, cardiovascular risk factors such as diabetes and hypertension, and other underlying immune system deficiencies like cancer, multiple sclerosis, and lupus, et cetera. And yes, those over the age of 16, or excuse me, 60, remain at a high risk. While many students may lack most of these risk factors, several school employees and families of students are at high risk. These risks can be substantially lowered by two main factors: everyone wearing masks and everyone socially distancing. Unfortunately, COVID-19 is known to spread even if the individual is without symptoms. Therefore, masks are particularly beneficial in reducing the transmission of the virus to other people. Additionally, masks also provide some benefit of protection for the one wearing the mask as well. Therefore, I believe masks will be crucial to avoid significant spreading. Masks are exceedingly safe. Counter indications to wearing a mask would be rare. In fact, several medical professionals, including myself, regularly wear masks while working more than 80 hours per week. At the time of this letter, there are more than 40,000 cases in Oklahoma and only a few within Alphafa County. These numbers are likely underestimated for a variety of reasons. As the COVID-19 pandemic is starting to reach more rural areas, it is certain that Alphafa County could have an increase in cases moving forward. I certainly understand the sentiment that many rural Oklahomans possess and reference the importance of personal liberties and self-reliance. Additionally, I believe that the parents of students should have the right to say that their children cannot be required to wear masks. However, I have faith that the Cherokee Public Schools will harness the safety of their students and faculty by possibly requiring noncompliant individuals to either learn from home or be placed in a segregated portion of the school environment. To the Cherokee Board of Education, thank you for your service. It is your continued decisions that directly impact the education and safety for all. Although I am confident several frameworks are already in place, please know I am more than willing to assist if need be. Finally, I would like to thank all of my teachers from Cherokee Public Schools. What fond memories I cherish. You are responsible for establishing my strong educational foundation, and I will remain forever grateful. Please know this writing is of my own medical expert opinion, and it is not an official stating from any current or previous employers. Wishing you a healthy and successful year. Sincerely, Clay T. Reed Indy, Fellow of Hematology and Oncology, National Cancer Institute, National Institutes of Health, Internal Medicine-trained Physician at the Mayo Clinic, Cherokee High School, class of 2009. Thank you.
Judy?
Amy Eckhart.
Amy Eckhart.
I'm a teacher, but I am also a parent of two elementary-aged girls. We've spent the last five months wearing masks, socially distancing, and having birthday parties on Zoom. We did this not because we are high-risk, but because we want to keep our families safe. With my parents, my aunt who's 92, who we've been shopping for and cooking meals, and my husband's grandma, we just had open-heart surgery. We will continue to wear our masks for them and to protect our children's teachers and their classmates. My oldest daughter, who is in the fourth grade, has shed many tears over school being canceled. I have the best chance for us to stay in our classrooms this year. If we do not protect our teachers and our students, who will be willing to become my substitute when I am not sick or I'm at home with a sick child?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Alicia Mitchell.
Alicia Mitchell.
Good evening. I would first like to say a thank you to our school board and our administration. I know this has been difficult decisions and discussions. My views on the safety measures that school should take are simple and to the point. I am in favor of the mandate, for the mandate of PPE. We have been so fortunate to avoid an excess of cases in our county, and I believe PPE would be a measure that we could take to continue to curb and outbreak in our community. The health of our students and teachers should be on the forefront of each mind in Cherokee. We're not a big city where families move around in isolation. We are a city that, a community that loves, supports, and cares for each other. I believe that any measure we take that could possibly keep our teachers and students safe as well as keeping our schools open reflects the ideals of this community in Cherokee Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Gibson.
Matt Gibson.
Do you want to come up there? Can you hear me? Do you want to come up there?
Yeah, come on in.
I guess, first of all, I got the utmost respect for you in the military. That's something I couldn't do. But I also want to point out that these are not soldiers. They're not going to wear these things right. They're going to be flipping them around. They're going to be throwing them. I mean, this is a deal where if this is going to work, it's going to have to be 100% or nothing at all. I mean, it's, these kids aren't going to wear them right. Two, I don't want to call anybody out or anything, but I know the people who have spoke are all over this town without masks. Their kids are, and they can say no or not, but they are. I've been watching. And I don't have a whole lot to say other than there are studies, I know there are studies on both sides. There are studies for the masks. There are studies for not having them. But the studies that I'm reading, kids are not that susceptible. They don't, kids are not the ones spreading them. It's the older people. There's, I just point out, if anybody wants to use the CDC as an example, how many times have they been wrong and corrected themselves? And so far, now this was two weeks ago, there are, like, okay, I'm just going to point these out, like the Boston Globe, the Wall Street Journal, all these different things here. Time, whatever. There have, of the world, this is what I read. This is what I got. Zero cases of children spreading to teachers or daycares. And so I know there's more things that I'm forgetting. But I think if you want your kids to wear a mask, or you want to wear a mask, then just have at it. Because if these masks really work and they're that safe, then you should be fine. But the rest of these kids, they're not going to wear them. They're not going to want, the majority are not going to want to wear them. They're not going to want to wear them correctly. When they cough or sneeze, which is, I think, the main point for these, the main reason for these masks is for the big droplets. Am I right? I mean, they're not going to sneeze into their own mask. I wouldn't. I know probably nobody else would. They're not going to cough into their own mask. So these are just the things that we need to think about before we try to have however many kids we have in our school system run around with these things over their face. Another thing, I got this from a teacher, and it made sense, and I just thought about this. There's a lot of kids that won't ask questions because they're like I was when I was in school. I don't want everybody looking at me. But the teachers can tell that they need help with whatever it is via their facial expressions. You're not going to see that with a mask on. And I think that's about all. And I know I've got more, but I think I said what I need to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cam Gibson.
Cam.
Pretty much had the same thing and brother to say. I've seen everyone of these people out there without masks on properly. Took the kids who get school physicals, 25 kids in there, not a one of them had them on right. They just ran around, blow their chin, chewing on them, blowing their nose. Nobody's wearing it right. If you're going to be in, be 100% in. If you want to wear them, wear them. You should not make the kids wear them because it's not going to work. That's it.
Thank you.
Shayna Smallwood.
You guys have a really hard decision here. So I am Shayna Smallwood. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I am also your emergency manager for this great county that we live in. Donna and I have worked together, and I've worked with some others on the board too. So I come here as a parent, and I come here as emergency manager, and I'm also the safety director for the county. So, and I have a lot of admiration for the people that have already spoke here too. So not going against any of you. I love and care for all of you very deeply so. But I have something to say. N95 masks are originally designed for contaminated areas, like painting. It is designed to filter in the air that you breathe and to filter and make that clean. The air that you breathe out is not clean. That air is contaminated. Surgical masks were designed for a clean and sterile environment. They should, by recommendation, be reapplied every 20 to 30 minutes to be effective. N95 masks will work great if you want to protect yourselves. Surgical masks will also do that too. I'm a firm believer in recommending, not mandating. That's a personal preference for me as an American, not only a mother, but also a county worker too. So for me, this started back in March with the county. I've had to take my kids to Mississippi to meet their father because divorce degrees did not get waived. Custody battles did not get waived due to COVID-19. We still had to proceed forward. We also, my grandmother died, and I had to go all the way to the East Coast. Sorry I went. There's no way I wouldn't be there for my grandfather. We went. We wore no masks. We wore no masks during any of that time, and we were just fine. I say that because I'm putting it in perspective on my side. Again, as a county worker, I've gone to the courthouse, we closed, we reopened. We've not worn masks these whole times. If you look at the Oklahoma City mandate, county employees are exempt from it. Why? That's just something I'm pulling out there. But we've been going on and operating, doing what we need to. I went to an emergency management meeting not too long ago. We all had the option at the Northwest Tech Center to either wear a mask or not wear a mask. We went into that meeting, and none of us were wearing masks. I'm just stating the facts. I've asked EMS workers what do they wear when they go for COVID-19. They wear an N95 mask, a base shield, gloves, and a gown. When you ask a firefighter what they wear, they wear a SCBA mask. Do we all know what a SCBA mask is? It filters your air in. It filters your air out. It also connects to the oxygen and allows you to be breathing what that oxygen is. Very, very protective. I'm just telling you what I know and what I've asked and what they've told me. I don't want to see you guys and the teachers have to police this because it won't get policed. I don't know if you've been anywhere else where they say they do that, and then you go in and it's just a free-for-all. You know, it's putting a Band-Aid on it in some degree. And I'm not trying to be rude by anybody. I believe that if you want to wear one, you should absolutely wear one. You have that right. But don't take the right away from those that feel comfortable with their immune system and are willing to know that they, what they eat, how they feel, how they exercise, and they're okay with going on and being forward with where they're at. So I just want to say that. So, I just, if, if Cherokee School is going to mandate masks, I please, please beg you to let them wear face shields. And make sure you're following the Americans with Disabilities Act, because I have ADHD and I cannot wear a mask for a very long period of time without going into an anxiety piece. Again, we must make sure that we follow the Americans with Disabilities Act during this pandemic, because that's what our responsibility is for our kids and making sure that we're giving those options and doing those things that we already know to do. And you guys do a great job at it, and so do all the teachers here. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that. I'm wrapping up, I just also want to say that we have three reported cases of COVID-19 in Althapa County. Those were cases already covered. We had a, what I would call a possible one last week, but it was purported to be a false negative, or a false positive, I should say, from my sources and what I know. So we're still at that three, and that means that we have zero because they're recovered. And if you do the three, that means it's .053%. You take three people and divide it by 500, 5,600, it's .05. Thank you.
Keith Smith.
Good evening. Seems like we're very divided on the mask issue. I would propose that the school board implement a 30-day trial period and see how this works out. Then we'll know, we'll have an idea if it's feasible or not, instead of us all being up in arms and upset with each other. Everything does it work, thermal wire, right? Provoke combat better. A helmet and body armor is very uncomfortable, but sometimes it keeps you alive. These masks are uncomfortable, I don't like them. This is my second pandemic. I was born when we had polio. Luckily we got a cure for it, I was going to get a cure for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leroy Goken.
Leroy Goken.
Thank you, school board, for making it possible for we citizens to speak, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity. And I am one that is not necessarily in favor of masks, and knowing my children, they would have a hard time with masks. Every mask is different, so if you as a school board mandated masks, they would all have to be alike, I would assume. But, I'm not in favor of masks because I don't, I think that there is much more to this virus than what it's showing. I think it's spiritual, I think it's physical situations, and, uh, I just think if they were mandated, it would not be fair to those that want to express themselves. When you wear a mask, it takes your identity away. You know, I have a hard time listening, hearing someone that's wearing a mask, because their mouth is covered all the time. And the biggest thing that I think about masks is it's a distraction. And these kids don't need any more distractions than what they already have in classrooms. And, uh, the thing I would say is, I appreciate the doctors that we have here, I, I have the utmost respect for them, but recently I've heard a video on Facebook from the lady doctor from Houston, and she's a black lady, and she says, "I came to America," and she says, "No more Americans have to die. We have a cure." Hydrochloroquine, and she mentioned two others. And she is more skilled than I am ever would think of, but she says, "I've treated over 350 patients." Over 350 patients at her office, and from 90-something on down to the youngest, and not one of them has died. And she says, "We have a cure. We have a cure." And we should not require a mask, and we should open up the country and open up the schools. And so, my desire is to not mandate masks, but to make it optional, if you need to wear a mask, then wear a mask. But I love what she said. Take off the mask, open up the schools, and open up the country, because no one has to die from this. We have a cure. And my challenge to you is to check that video out, because Facebook is rapidly taking it off. And I believe it's because of the truth that this doctor has shared. It's the frontline doctors that went to Washington DC, and you can watch it yourselves on the video, and especially this black lady, uh, I don't remember her name, but she says, "Open up the country, open up the schools, and you don't have to have masks." So I just want you to think about that. And, uh, I don't want masks to be divisive among us. That's the big thing that I see. And I think it would be divisive, I would, I think it would be distraction for the kids especially, and they definitely don't need any more distractions when they're trying to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Weeby.
George Weeby.
I originally had not planned on speaking, but as I went through the end services this morning, and I practiced two days or two practices today with the high school football boys, and I talked to my wife, something hit me, and I just wanted to share it tonight. I coach football and I coach track, and when we get ready to play a game, our athletes have a plan. They know what I want on defense, they know what Coach Helmberger wants on offense. When we run track, they know how to run their races. I'm coming to you as a teacher and asking this. I am so thankful I don't have to make this decision, but please, please, whatever you decide, give me as a teacher a plan. And by what that, I mean is that if I have heard, well, this would be an option maybe. You don't have to wear them outside, but inside, when you can social distance, put them on. I don't want to be the person fighting the battle, when is social distancing? I have a classroom, my biggest class has 13. I might think I can spread them out for social distancing. The kid sitting in the front row and his parents might think they're not. You have now, in my opinion, caused me a battle that I have not applied for. I will follow any rule, any stipulation, any regulation that you see fit because you are the board. But please make your decision clear and precise. And to make that even simpler, if I need to wear a mask, I want to know where, I want to know when. You wear, will wear a mask in the classroom. You will wear a mask in the hallway. You will wear a mask in the hallway, but you do not have to wear a mask in the classroom. If you're going to make the decision, which I know you are, don't leave me as a educator hanging. Please don't say you don't have to wear them when you can social distance, because my idea, I assure you, of social distancing is different than somebody else. One person tells me three feet, one person tells me six feet, one person tells me 15 minutes. I ask you as a board, when you make the decision, be clear and precise. Tell me as an educator, when to make the kids wear them and when not to. Because if you say, when social distancing is possible, who's going to deem social distancing? And when I tell that kid, put on that mask, and he says, "Well, they said it's social distancing, and I'm social distances," and I say, "No, you're not," where does that battle take us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Blossom.
Aaron.
I don't have any pension notes in front of me, um, but I think as teachers and parents, I think the number one goal of school is to learn and to be, uh, always be in tone with the teacher, I can't think of the right word, I don't like being in front of people, but anyway. Um, I want you to go home in front of a bunch of kids that are around each other, friends, and put masks on, tell me they're not going to be distracted with the mask, and they're going to pay attention to you giving them masks. Just like, I know humans are not like puppies, but I have a puppy at home. With me right now, he listens very well. I get him around his friend, he don't care what I'm doing, you know? Um, I, sports, same way, there's, how many kids are at the football field right now? Are they socially distancing, are they wearing their mask, are any of them sick? Have any of them got sick? How many kids are at the pool swimming that are in this community together? Are any of them sick? How many cases do we have in here? Not very many, three is what she said. Um, I'm not going to say any names, my kid was at a birthday party this weekend, uh, there was 10 kids around, yes, there was family members, there was also non-family members. Um, any of them have masks? Absolutely not. They're at a movie theater, um, I think it was great, um, but I don't think masks are mandatory, should be mandatory. None of those kids I know of are sick or anything like that, no, it was last Saturday, so it hasn't been that long. But, I, I really hope you guys really do think about it. I really don't think this is about COVID. I think this is really a political game that a lot of people are falling into. I really hope you guys do a lot of research, I've done a lot of research. Um, there's a lot more I wanted to say, I can't think of it at this right, at this point, but, um, the other thing I want you to think about is, there's a 99% successful rate nationwide of this COVID. How many kids have died, committed suicide, have done anything like that because they cannot go to school? Because of a COVID that has a 99% successful rate? If you're autoimmune, I have family members that are autoimmune, if you don't want to go to school, don't, stay home. There's plenty of unemployment, extra $600, people are bringing home more money than me bringing home working around people with no masks than I'm making. Don't, don't make it mandatory, please. If you want to, great, if you don't, don't make it mandatory. I can't think of anything else, just please really think about it, and, uh, I know a lot of, a lot of people are hurting just due to COVID. Committed suicide, everything else, all because of a fake plague. If you're autoimmune, you don't do nothing for the flu, the H1N1, none of that. COVID pops up and it will set the world down, it's absolutely crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Fleming. Matt Light.
Matt.
I wasn't going to speak, but, uh, so if some, you guys do mandate the masks, what's the consequence going to be if a kid fails to wear the PPE? And also, if PPE is so important, why are you all not wearing it right now? In that small office, you guys were all shoulder-to-shoulder, not wearing it, it's so important. You as leaders should be wearing it, setting an example, yet sitting up here not wearing it, saying you're going to mandate something like that? No, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. What's that? Okay, I'm going to give, uh, just a few moments here, if anybody else would like to speak, now is your chance. No more statements? Okay, moving on to number four on the agenda, presentation by Nikki Wyatt, PAC on COVID-19 with current information and personal protective equipment.
Since you guys are on the other side of the slides. So I know since I'm socially distance, visible distance from you, I could take this thing off, but since we may be asking our teachers to teach in them, I'll stand up here and talk to you tonight with it on. Um, I think most of you know me, and if you'll give me a little grace to just say, um, thanks to everybody who spoke tonight. I know, um, everyone who did, at the heart of it is safety for our children and our community, so I do appreciate that. So, most of you know me, Nikki Wyatt, I've practiced here for, going on 25 years. I've had the privilege of providing healthcare in this community for a very long time. Serving this area is not something I take for granted. I'm honored that the administration has asked me to speak. I originally thought I'd be standing up here as a parent with the three to five-minute timeline, so, um, things changed and that's okay. It's much like, uh, this COVID, it's ever-changing, every day is a new day. And I think, uh, as my guest here tonight, Dr. Newton can attest, this is unlike anything we've ever experienced in medicine. We all thought H1N1 in 2009 was interesting and challenging, but this is unlike anything else, so. But I also am the proud woman of a Cherokee, so I have to wear that hat as well, but I will mostly talk to you tonight as a practitioner. So Dr. Newton, he wasn't on the agenda, but I asked him to come so that we could be in kind of solidarity for this community. As most of you know, he is also Cherokee graduate, so walked this stage, and now comes back here to practice and take care of many of you as well. We both have a very deep love for this community, um, and all we want to do is see the teachers, the students, the faculty physically and mentally healthy in school as long as possible and thriving. So, I understand this topic is very controversial, obviously, as we've heard tonight, um, but this is probably one of the most crucial decisions to be made. I, you know, I've thought about running for school board several times, and I can honestly say I'm glad I'm not sitting in your seat tonight. But, I appreciate your commitment to this community and your selfless service as volunteers, and I know that each and every one of you will make the decision based on the safety of our students and faculty, so. You have 430, 430 students and 70 faculty members, all of which go home to families every single night, so it's a big decision, guys. But, I hope this, this little discussion, if nothing else, reduces some fears, because none of us want to live in fear, right? I wanted to provide some reassurance and comfort that together as a community, we can get through it. We'll do some very simple things, so. Next slide. So, as many people who spoke tonight said, there is a lot of public distrust. Yeah, never been through anything quite like this unfolding in the public eye, on social media, watching every single move. So, what I chose to add tonight, none of it was from the CDC, none of it was from the WHO. It's actually, a lot comes from, uh, something called Project Echo, that I attend three times a week in the early mornings with clinicians across the state of Oklahoma, who are all in the same boat trying to make heads of all of this. You won't see anything based on Facebook, there is one thing off of YouTube, and the only reason- only reason is because my genius daughter can figure out how to get the video from the American Academy of Thoracic into the slides. We have pulled it off YouTube. But other than that, everything is clinical-based, okay, guys? That was very, very important to me. Is that the first slide? I may have to fire Sydney Wyatt. And that's a lightsaber, but that's, that's cool. All right, so, very simply, you guys all know this. A lot of the things I hear is, hey, COVID, or coronavirus has been around for a long time. It's on the back of my life full can. You are correct, but SARS-CoV-2 has not. It's a very new thing. We don't know how it acts. And in five months, I'm not sure we know more than we did when it began. Roughly 80% of those cases are mild, as was stated. Some are even asymptomatic. It's a pretty scary thing, guys. I mean, flu doesn't do that. We don't see asymptomatic cases. And it quickly spread to what we call a pandemic. Next slide, please. The sign on the left is kind of busy, but I did want to add it because it just shows you that it is so wide. One to 30 days on the timeline. Guys, that's why we have trouble identifying it, along with the asymptomatic. Close contact is the main root of communicability. It's pretty rare, but it does happen on surfaces, and I did put that in this slide. I know that's something you guys talk about as far as disinfecting, but I didn't want to throw those numbers up there and alarm people, because that's not really the way this virus transmits. But it can happen, mostly through droplets, and that's why we're talking about PPE tonight. Next slide, please. Full lightsaber again. Here's the symptoms, but guys, I want to tell you, those are ever-changing as well. It's all over the board. You know, I think Dr. Newton and I would both agree that when we see someone with flu, we have a pretty good idea. It's not the case with this. It can be everything, every, anything, and a mix of all the above. Next slide, please. So here's the kicker. You know, there's no treatment. There is no vaccine. Testing kind of stinks. And right now, the only thing we have to fight this well is those three things in the right-hand corner. Next slide, please. So here's the current numbers as of today, just to show you. And there's a lot to talk about mortality rate, survival rate, infectious fatality rate. You can expunge numbers however you want, but when we calculate flu deaths, it's pretty simple. We take deaths and number of cases. So, you can pull out certain age groups and make it look good or different, but this is where we're sitting. In Oklahoma, we're doing pretty darn good. Outfauke County, we're doing great, and we want to keep it that way. Next slide, please. And as most of you guys know, we turned into yellow the other day, and I kind of had a sad party, because I liked her green, and we had it for a while. And when these are based on cases per 100,000, it's not going to take much for us to go into the orange. So we want to contain it, because that's a lot easier than suppression. So you want to keep it as low as possible, rather than getting it out of control and trying to work from there. Next slide, please. So again, I just want you guys to understand, because this is something that I know Dr. Newton and I both get a lot. There's nothing worse than the flu. Guys, it's a lot different. In five months, that's where we're sitting. And I put H1N1 up there, because most of you guys walked through that with me. And if you remember, I held a little session at the Baptist Church talking about that, because we had huge outbreaks in daycares and in the school. Started in April of 2009, and we had a little lull during the summer. And then when we went back to school, September, we had huge cases, and we had lots of pediatric deaths. Now granted, like most people talked about tonight, pediatrics are really doing well with COVID. Lots of them are mild symptoms, or maybe asymptomatic, but that doesn't mean those kids can't spread it. And as you guys can see in your packet, there's lots of studies that indicate that. So as bad as H1N1 was, there was lots of cases, but there was very few deaths and minimal hospitalization. Next slide, please. I really like the fact that we get to go back to lightsaber all the time, by the way. All right. So are we really on the mask already? You can hold that for just a second. Let me see. One other thing I want you guys to remember about the swine flu period that you may not be aware of. I mean, we're all a little concerned. I don't recall if we shut down school. I think we did for a week or so. There was talk of closing daycares and things like that. But after those numbers unfolded, flu seasons are calculated from September to September. So, it was a little weird, because we started in April, and then a new flu season started, so our numbers were really kind of all over the place. So in 2011, we went back and looked at the numbers, because we thought they were very, very low. But surely, there was a lot more cases than deaths, and that's what I want you guys to understand, is when you go through something that you're not familiar with, science is tricky. We just don't know it all. But because of that season, what was interesting is in 2003, after the numbers that we looked at, there was actually lots of studies about face coverings. And I've included those in your packets. So face coverings aren't a new idea. They actually considered it if we had another flu pandemic. H1N1 was considered a flu or a pandemic. It wasn't deemed one here in the US. It was considered a state of emergency. So, we've been looking at this idea of decreasing communicability for a long time. In fact, very interestingly, after my many, many days of digging into studies, is in 2003 was SARS, plain SARS, which affected Asia, okay, which is very similar to SARS-CoV-2. Came out of China, went into Taiwan, really hit them hard. They themselves started doing studies about face coverings. If that was to ever happen again. Well, what do you think they implemented as soon as COVID hit Taiwan? They implemented those plans of face coverings. And what comes as well? The face coverings. So they utilized those studies that showed mitigating the virus. So, this is why face coverings are helpful. Yes, kids are going to have difficulty wearing them. I understand. It's going to be hard to implement. But as you will see, it does mitigate the spread. I've heard lots of things about, well, it doesn't protect against the very small molecules of COVID. Well, those have to attach to respiratory secretions. So, if you'll just, quick, this is real quick. And again, sorry it's off of YouTube, but I guess it needs to sound smart enough to get it out of the study. So the surgical mask is actually what I'm wearing today. It's a free fly. And this is just regular talking. I think there was some discussion tonight about, it's mostly sneezing and coughing, but it's actually talking as well. Nobody fall asleep with the soothing music. So, what is really interesting that you guys watched this is since some places have mandated or required or highly recommended face coverings, there's been studies about that. And the cool thing is, and I think I included it in your, in your packet, is that it not only is effective in mitigating the virus load, whereby reducing the chance of severe illness, it is actually causing a greater community level of immunity, which is pretty exciting, because lots of people talk about herd immunity. Are we on the coughing there? Sneak! So, you know, this is something that Dr. Newton and I made up. As you know, federal organizations, state organizations recommend it, and I know there's a lot of distrust in some of those entities. But what you need to know is that it's not just your local providers. It's your area specialist. I had conversations with three pulmonologists, two cardiologists, and infectious disease doc, multiple family practice providers, Army surgeons, anesthesiologists, and no one says that this is not a good idea. It's the only thing we have. I wish we had more, guys. You know, washing your hands is awesome. We have to do it. We have to disinfect. Physical distancing, that would be great, because if you can't, if you can do that, you don't have to do this. I don't want to wear masks every day. But when you can't, let's slow it. Let's contain it. Let's keep our kids and our teachers and our faculty and our community well. So, next slide, please. Just so you know, again, doesn't cause hypoxia. I really, I meant to bring you guys all an N95 and a pulse ox over, but I forgot to do that. I'd love to look for studies about it, but there are none, because it just, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't happen. It doesn't cause hypoxia. It doesn't lower immune system. So here's a little quote from the American Lung Association and the American College of Chest Physicians. So, next slide, please. There's just a few, just a few entities that support it. Next slide. And there's, in case you guys want to go read a bunch of studies this weekend. So, again, an unloved letter from Dr. Reed. It's perfect. I bet Mayo couldn't have said it better myself. And yes, there are those special circumstances where masks will not work. And we'll just have to adapt. That's what we do. I mean, this community is phenomenal at coming together and working through it and adapting. We have incredible teachers that are going to be creative and spacing, working outside as much as you can. But yeah, there will be special circumstances when you guys maybe consider that. Is that my timing?
No.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I was like waiting for the hook to come get me offstage. I think that's about it. I hope that wasn't too boring. Did I miss anything, Dr. Newton? You want to speak?
Yeah.
Awesome. I have to preface it, but I had no idea that there was controversy about this, so when I asked him to join me, sorry about that.
No, that's fine. That's kind of what, so Nikki messaged me over the weekend. It was like, hey, I'm going to present to the school board, and then like, you know, she just wanted to kind of pick my brain, I guess, and see where I stand for solidarity purposes. And the first thing she asked me was, what do you, how do you feel about masks for the school kids? And I almost thought it was a trick question. I think this is an obvious thing to do. It's easy. It's cheap. I know they're not, there's going to be issues. Obviously, there's going to be issues. Kids are going to play with them, this, that. I mean, yeah, you're going to have to adapt to it. Making, I thought we were going to have like a conversation about the logistics, not like, should we do it at all? I mean, you have so many people recommending it. Clay, I loved the letter from Clay and the fact that he has seen it. You know, Nikki and I, we haven't had lately that many in this community. We haven't seen it. He's seen it. He's watched people die. He's from this community. He's not part of some conspiracy. He's trying to do what's best for us. And as a provider in this community, I agree. I think that's the reasonable thing to do. And, you know, I've gone to the grocery store without my mask on, and shame on me and that sort of stuff, but I don't think that's a reason to keep all of the schools safe during school, because you're going to see a spike. I remember, like Nikki was talking about with H1N1, we had this nice lull, and we're like, oh, it's going away. And that's when I very first started my clinical rotations, and we had this huge spike, huge influx. And, I mean, it's going to happen. This is something that is cheap and pretty easy to do logistically. I don't, I don't think it's that complicated. But I understand there's a lot of strong feelings on both sides, and no matter what you decide, people are going to be angry at you. But good luck.
Thank you. So that leads us to number five on the agenda, discussion and vote to, and we're going to separate these two out. I've got an A and a B item. Discussion and vote to A, add the Oklahoma School Safety Protocol to the Return of Alert Plan, which is basically the, what ties our school into the Oklahoma COVID-19 alert system with the color mapping. And I believe everybody's got a copy of that, and that is not requiring us to do anything. It's just a recommendation, and it says, recommendations in this document must not be interpreted as a substitute for close consultation with local, regional, and state health agencies and experts. So, it's only a guideline. I think it's, it's good to be able to kind of judge what our county, where it's at, and where our counties that surround our county is, or what state they're in. Is there any comment on the Oklahoma School Safety Protocol? Yeah, we can touch on that. I'll tell you what, you can just combine both of those.
On, yeah. In this plan, you know, we've talked a lot about that one size does not fit all. One mask is not going to fit everybody. It's not going to fit a child or an adult. It's going to need what works for them, what they can agree with, what they can't agree with. And there, there's a lot of common sense that I think everybody is forgetting that we're going to use. There are exceptions to the mask rules, and there are special needs kids that have to have a different type of mask. They do have to have a face shield. The governor has given all of the schools an enormous gift. Next week, he'll be giving to the PPE that he has purchased for all of the school districts. We'll be getting gloves and masks and gowns and everything that we would need to keep all of our people safe. So some of the exceptions with masks and their combinations are people who work directly interact with individuals who are deaf or hard hearing. Obviously, we're not going to place a mask on. A student that cannot hear, that needs that interaction to be able to get their educational services. Who rely on liberty to communicate, who need, they can remove the face coverings for whatever they need. People with medical conditions or disabilities that prevent wearing a face covering, and they, if they would like to wear a face shield. Persons with medical conditions, wearing, that could obstruct their breathing. Persons with medical conditions, wearing, that could obstruct their breathing. You know, we talked about it, we laughed a little bit about this point. I'm like, somebody's having a full blown asthma attack, you're not going to make them stay in that mask. And obviously, we want the best for our kids, so we don't want to harm them. We're trying to keep our school open and our kids and our parents and our teachers safe. So there's several, there's a lot of combinations in this plan. And as Cory said, it is a recommendation. It is not a mandate, but it does give me a guideline to go by when it comes down to, do we need to close our school? Do we need to, what, where are our cases? Where are we as a county? I am also the contract tracing person for our district, so I will go closer to the health department and say, okay, we have this case, we have our our CD charts, here's where we are with this, what happens now? And, and there have been schools that started last Thursday, tomorrow, today they went distance learning, because they get one case of COVID in their child nutrition program. So there's a lot of things we can't control. And so if we may, whatever the vote is tonight, it may not matter, because we may go distance learning within a week. And it's not just our decisions on that. We have to work with the county health department, and they make recommendations to us. So that leads into special needs. We have a whole guideline to go by for our special needs kids, and we're going to do that. And we're going to make sure that our special need kid, these kids are getting the services they need to be able to be successful and be at school, because all kids need to be in school, and they need to be given every opportunity to learn. So if there's any fear about those type issues, please remember that most of us have got a lot, we have a lot of fears in the school business, and we do use a lot of common sense when it comes down to anything that's going to harm a child. So that's what I wanted to say. The, what I'm asking you to do is approve the Oklahoma School Safety Protocol that ties us into the county health department, that gives us the ability to look at what, we're actually yellow right now. We were green, I was like, Nikki, I was like, oh, keep our green. But then it gives me a guideline, and on this right here, on your last sheet, beside the, it shows you on this page right here, like if we're in yellow, or we're in orange, or we're in orange one, or we're in red, it gives you the recommendations to follow. And that just gives me a baseline. It's not necessarily what we have to do, but at least it is a plan. Like Mr. Weeby said, we need a plan. But this is a very fluid situation. I can tell you what the plan is today, and by 8:00 tomorrow, the plan has to change according to what's happened with our numbers or whatever's gone on. So I'll do the very best that I can to make sure that we're consistent in what we do, even if the plan has to change.
Did you say, did you say it's non-binding?
It is not. They are recommendations for me to use when we have issues.
What are we voting on, then?
To add it to our return to learn, that we did last month.
Basically add it to our safety packet as an additional recommendation with all the other state things that have given us, this is just basically, what I see beneficial is the, is the mapping, to be able to kind of tell where our states are, or where our counties at, and where our local counties surrounding us are at. And we won't get that information without this, without this vote?
We do, but if you don't have some type of a plan to go by, I mean, I, I-
We can adopt the plans though, right? With their recommendations, we can adopt whatever we want, right?
We can, we can adopt whatever we want. We can say, we're going to close down, we're never going to close out, or we're going to close down that. But because this, every time you get a COVID case, it's, it's a completely different situation. And so if we are going by what color we are in the county, there's at least some consistency in what we're going to see that we do. Now, if it says we're, orange one is not a closed down situation, but the orange two is a closed down situation.
But we don't have to close unless we want to?
Unless the health department recommends-
So if we do vote for this, and the health department recommends we close, then we have to close?
We don't have to close.
Just a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
It's just a guideline, is all it is.
I have to work with the health department, but they're going to tell you what they feel like you should do.
Clear as mud. Anybody else have any other questions, concerns, or on the protocol plan? I do see it as additional information that's in our packet to, it's more information for us to go off of, but I don't see how it does any harm. It's not telling us that we have to do anything. It's just, it's information that we've put in our plan.
Are you sure it's non-binding?
No, it's just, it's recommendation. It doesn't-
It's non-binding. I just don't understand what we're voting on. It's non-binding. What are we voting on? Just to add a recommendation?
We're adding this protocol system to our return to learn plan, so that I have, I have to give a return to learn plan to the State Department of Education. And then when this is all put together, I upload it, and if we don't have it, then we're out of compliance with the recommendation.
So this is remaining compliant?
I, I have to be compliant with what our return to learn plan is, what, and I have to do that within 10 days after you voted in. So we have to have some documents voted in for the State Department of Education to be in compliance with what they're wanting us to do. The state school board did not vote to make this mandatory. They voted to make, to leave it as a recommendation, but for schools to be able to use it. So I do have to have a vote from the board as far as what I turn in to establish.
I'll give you guys more time if you want to look over it, or if you have any more concerns or questions.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the Oklahoma School Safety Protocol to approve-
Okay, Hammer's made a motion to accept the Oklahoma School Safety Protocol to return to learn plan. Looking for a second? Shane second, Judy in call roll.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kowel?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Willard?
Yes.
Okay, number five, on B, discussion and vote to determine personal protective equipment policy at church and public schools. The final. So if anybody wants to kick it off, feel free. Do you, uh, superintendent, your recommendation would be, did you have a written statement?
I did have. I think, I think it's-
The second one. I do have a recommendation. Last month I brought to the board that we would go with masks at school. I really, I, I apologize. I had no idea that it would be that much of a difficult situation, but it is. And we have community members on both sides of that fence. And when you do a survey, like I did with parents, or I did with teachers, you're, it's very even, 50/50. You don't get a lot of, there's not a lot of gray areas. So I do appreciate everybody that came out and spoke today. One of the things that I will revert back to is that there's a component that I appreciate, Mr. Wyatt, about leadership. I don't have the luxury of being able to think. I don't want to wear a mask. If I can social distance with somebody, I'm not going to wear my mask. If I can't social distance with somebody, I'm going to wear my mask. I don't have choices when I go other places either, but that doesn't matter. What matters is what happens within our school community when 500 people get back together in one small place. It's inevitable. We're going to have cases of COVID. But what is not inevitable is that we shut down and we don't come back. So if I can, if I can have every tool in the toolbox to keep our kids safe, because kids are important, but if our teachers go down, we don't have school, because I don't have substitutes that can come in for that. So my recommendation would be that we wear masks for the school year, that we, if we can social distance, and I know that some people want it to be black and white, nothing in this, nothing about this COVID is black and white. But I don't feel like, if we can go to the cafeteria and we can social distance, when we've added tables, and we've added spacing, and we've added, or if they go outside and transition between classes, or if, if there's other places that can be social distance, they need the ability, just like Mr. Wyatt said, they go in their office and they take off their mask, they need the ability to be able to take that mask off. But when we're in the halls and we're packed in those halls in class changes, there's no chance to social distance. I believe that we need to wear masks. I believe that there was a good idea about let's come back in 30 days. In 30 days, it may not even be an issue, because we've had X amount of COVID cases and we're at distance learning. But if we give ourselves every opportunity to stay open, I'd rather err on the side of safety than to not say these words and then have someone, one of our teachers, one of someone be very safe. And when it comes to family medical leave act, that's a whole other story for us on the business end of it. Because if we get a, an educator whose daycare, or their child cannot go to their childcare for 14 days, they get to stay home because we've given them those days, but that was part of the NMLA, we had to. After that 14 days, for two weeks, they can take their own time. After those two, those two weeks, for 10 weeks, we will pay them a two-thirds to pay. So you can see that we could possibly have teachers that have more than one child, or more than one person at home at their parent's court, that would be gone for 14 weeks. When you start having that happen, it doesn't matter, nobody's going to have to wear a mask at school anyway, because they're not going to be here. The other side is, if you have a family member in your home that gets COVID, then you have to stay in quarantine for, until that, your family member has not had fever for 48 hours or has no symptoms. And then, after they're well, you start your 14 days. So that's how this works with COVID. And we have to protect the people that are here in the front line every day. We have to make sure that we're hearing what they say, and we hear what the parents say. So that's my recommendation, is that we wear masks, where we can social distance, if we've got a class in here and they can social distance, take your mask off. But when we're in the hallways, or we're in classrooms and you can't social distance with teenage people, we need to be protecting them with PPE.
Thank you. Open for discussion, feel free.
Well, I, I guess I better say a few things. As a former teacher in Oklahoma City, I see, I see what your teachers are talking about with having a plan and knowing what to do and reducing gray areas. I'm afraid that wearing the mask in class wouldn't be logistically impossible. It would be absolutely impossible. I think when you hand a child a mask, they're going to touch the mask with their fingers, and they're going to take whatever they've had on their hands, and they're going to put that on the mask, and then they're going to put the mask on their face, and they're going to touch the mask probably every 20 seconds. And every time that they touch their hand, does something get you, whether they're wiping their nose or picking up something gross off the ground, and then they touch that mask to business, it brought all those germs up into their face. Secondly, as a math guy, and I know so many people lose it to small particles, an N95 surgical mask is supposed to filter out particles that are .3 micron in size and larger. A micron is 1/1 billionth of a meter, and so for, for perspective, a human hair is approximately 30 microns. And so an N95 mask, when worn appropriately, filters out .3 micron particles and above, largely bacteria, there are worn four bacteria in the back. And a COVID-19 particle ranges from .06 to .14 micron in size. And so these students, even if they were wearing N95 masks and wearing them perfectly, they are still not one to filter out the COVID-19 virus. And so now you've got something that shouldn't worth, shouldn't work mathematically, because the virus is smaller than the mask, and you've got somebody handing a student a mask, touching the mask, you've got the student touching the mask. I'm just not sure that this is the right decision for this school right now. I wouldn't mind revisiting it in 30 days, but I think for the first 30 days, it should be the parents' and the students' choice if they want to wear a mask. And that's how I feel. I think, the last thing I'd like to say is, if we think the difference between being able to bring our kids back to school safely and not safely is a mask, then they should not be back in school. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to go ahead and, I don't disagree with you on that. That's a discussion we need to have. I don't have one problem that we want to have a discussion about pushing the baby to school. I think that the more, I think kids need to be at school, we're ready to be at school, but if we are looking at changing from yellow to orange, orange one, because we all get back to school, this isn't the safest place for them. So I do agree with you on that. And if you, if any of you, the board members want to take that up, I'm more than happy to have that discussion.
I can go ahead and give my perspective. It's, it's been a long process. I've, I've been on both sides of the fence. I am, honestly, I'm just thankful that we didn't take a vote on it at the last meeting, because things have changed so much. You know, we were green at that meeting, and things have changed, but I would like to err on the side of caution. You know, I'm not a doctor. I don't know all the information, and I can make two separate piles with conflicting information to battle each other out, and both of them could be wrong, and both of them could be right in some areas. However, my goal is to see schools start and to try to stay open. Saying that, I would say the first 30 days of school is going to be critical to maintaining a safe environment, to minimize the risk. This is what we're doing. We're risk mitigating this problem. And I, I think we should be willing to, to do that. And personally, I would like to see first 30 days of calendar days. These aren't school days, so it may only be 18 days that we're talking about till the next board meeting. So I would suggest we talk about mandating coming back to school on time on Friday, wearing masks where social distancing can't be done, and reevaluate using the color charts and all the new information that's going to come out in 30 days. And I respect Weeby's position as a coach, and, and that's going to open up a whole another ball of wax. I understand that. However, if this thing goes south, there's not going to be esports. My goal is to keep school open and to provide a safe environment for the teachers and students. And for me personally, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I don't think we're asking that much from, for, from now until we meet again. But that's kind of where I'm leaning towards. Do I think that students are going to have a hard time wearing them? Absolutely. Do I think they're going to hate them? Absolutely. I think there's going to be problems. I seen my son wear one the other day, and he's below the age group that we're, that, that, you know, we're talking about. I'm talking about, just to clarify, I'm talking about sixth graders through 12. Fifth graders, when they're at the, at the middle school and high school building, only where social distancing can be done. We're not talking about the little kids. The little kids are, they're getting little windshields to keep from sharing things being projected at each other, but- But to not, to not do anything, I think, everybody can have their opinion, but when you're sitting on the board and the bug stops here. And for me, I just want to do everything I can do to protect our teachers and our students. And I'm not saying that if you're opposed, you're not. But it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty simple thing. I don't think I'm taking anybody's rights away, I just don't feel that way. And hopefully after 30 days, we can come back and our numbers have gotten better. Maybe we're back in the green and maybe we got a county or two that's buttoned up next to us that's, that's turning yellow to green. If it's not, we're gonna have bigger issues anyway. And then I'm worried about continuing school. Those are my thoughts and, and, you know, this is an open discussion. So I just encourage everybody just to kinda, let's talk this out and, and see if we can have a compromise.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
Just swivel it over.
Sure. We've been working all summer. We have Erin and Luke are coming in twice a month and they're spraying the disinfectant. We have, every classroom has a COVID box where every hour on that, the kids will do some wiping. And in the morning, when kids come to school, we'll be taking temperatures. If there's a fever over 104, then they'll be sent home. We're gonna take temperatures again at noon and if there's a fever at 104, they'll go home. If the teachers have a fever, they go home. We are, we've done a lot of in-service with our maintenance staff, with the leaders. Last week, we all got together, we talked about all of the things that we needed to do to accommodate. The buses, buses are getting scraped down, the bus drivers will be wearing the mask. When they can open their windows, that's one of the things that's most helpful is being able to have ventilation. Also washing hands, washing hands, washing hands. We're not using our water fountains, we're just using bottled, the bottled part of the water fountain. We won't be having breakfast in the cafeteria any longer. We'll be having breakfast as a grab and go in the classrooms so that there's not as much togetherness. Goodness, the principals have all worked on how to not have kids congregating in our, in our areas, in the elementary, not congregating in the cafeteria, after school, before school. The classrooms will be open at 7:45 where a student can just go straight into their classroom at 7:45 and then be able to sit there and have their breakfast or not, whatever they decide. There's just, on our return to, return to learn or plan, there's a whole list of everything that we've done. And all of the, you know, all of the listening to what we're being asked to do by the State Department of Education, what we're being asked to do by the Health Department, what we're being asked to do by people that, this is their job to keep us going, to keep us here. So there's, there's just a lot of other things that we've done besides masks. But we just wanna make sure that we're doing everything that we can. We do have classes going up in the, in the little kids. And I wanna thank Lightning Brew if you're working so hard to get those made for us.
So right now, we are in the orange, which is, oh, yellow, sorry, yellow, which is just recommendations for all of this. Which if we vote tonight, would make it a mandate. I mean, that would be a choice, a recommendation. So are we gonna have everybody wear them or is it going to be a preference? If you have a parent that comes in and they don't want their child to wear a mask, how is that going to be addressed?
That's right, we don't give a shit. We have options for school. If, if a child's parent is adamant, my child is not gonna wear a mask and we're gonna only get distance learning as an option. It depends on how you make your motion. I mean, if you, if you wanna say, you know, giving a student, a parent an opportunity to bring in a medical note that says, my child cannot do that because of this condition, I, I think that falls back into the safeguards that are put in by the plan that we just approved that there are some circumstances where kids just cannot wear them. Now, just because you don't wanna wear them, that's different. But not being able to wear them, you should not have to wear it if you're not able to wear it. You know, there's a lot of things that we ask these kids to do that they don't want to do that we, we're a school community and you can't, it's too hard to make rules for just for one or two. You have to do rules for your school's community.
So if a parent does not want their child to wear a mask, they're gonna have to go to distance learning?
They don't have to, but it's an option.
So they can go to school and not wear a mask and still be in school?
It depends on why you vote tonight. If you vote and you vote for the, whatever your motion is, if you vote to have children wear masks, the way that it's been presented is six through 12 right now, in any, in any place where you can't social distance. So that'd be like in the halls, you cannot social distance in those halls. You cannot social distance in a classroom at the high school, middle school level. We don't have that kind of space. If we did, we would put everybody at 6 feet apart and just go on. And also, when you go back to the rules of being, of being contagionist and do you have it, what they say is if you have been within three feet of someone for more than 15 minutes, then you have been exposed. So when we put people further apart, and I know a lot of our teachers have already tried to do that the best that they can, somebody's not gonna be three feet apart. And so having a mask in the classroom is another way to keep the other stuff flying about. Let me go back to Viggie's presentation.
Okay, what about for sports? When they're, when the guys are out there playing football and basketball and you can't social distance them?
Right. What we've got right now, luckily, is we've got open air sports going on. And so, and we talked a little bit about it today. The softball girls, she said they can't wear a mask, doing what they're doing, she wears a mask. And that's also depending on what the school that you go to requires. Like if they required that everybody wore a mask, we would wear a mask. If, if it is, you know, we're doing the social distancing, we're all these fields together. I know they're doing things to disinfect the actual ball, softball, things to actually disinfect the football. There, there's absolutely no way you can social distance with football. But what you're seeing now is, I bet you within the next week or so, you're gonna see a whole lot less football in the state of Oklahoma because it's just impossible to social distance with football. So the OSSAA has not come out and made any mandates about if we go to school or, or we have sports, we don't have sports. They're putting it just like the State Department did, that it's our decision on how we handle it. And what we've also talked about is if we go distance learning, we won't have activities unless they're virtual. Because if we're gonna tell people that we can't have their children in the school, we're not gonna tell them that we can have them on a football field. Because we're here to educate children. Football is great, softball's great, basketball's great, activities grow. But this year, we have to focus on education and getting through this year.
Can I make one more point? I'd just like to address the fact that this could be a highly politicized situation. For example, I'd like to read a study from the CDC. It says children appear to be at lower risk for contracting COVID-19 compared to adults. To put this in perspective, according to the CDC, as of July 2020, children under 18 years old account for .1%, .1% of COVID-related deaths. Flu-related deaths in children occur every year. From 2004 to 2019, CDC recorded flu season deaths from 37 to 187, depending on the year. During the H1N1 pandemic, which occurred from April 15th to October 2nd, 2010, 358 children died in this country. Now, I don't think one school board had a meeting on wearing masks. In this pandemic, we've had 64 children die, less than each of the last five flu season. So somebody saying that we need to take care of the children and put the children first should first explain why we haven't been wearing masks for the last five years.
I can't speak to any other illness because it's never been a pandemic. I can say that when we get 500 people back in a closed campus atmosphere, we're gonna see cases. I hope that we don't, but in the.
We're running from 368 to 64.
Okay, but if a student gets it and, and does pass it to a teacher regardless of what the risk is, I guess as a, as a school board, we go, that's what we are doing right now is to try to figure out if we're comfortable with that risk or not.
And a student has passed the flu to a teacher before, I'm sure. And I bet the terrible thing that happened and yet we haven't ever been wrapping up students or.
But we're also dealing with a lot of unknowns and just like you said, it is political.
It is, and we know that.
There is some political side, not saying the whole thing is political, obviously there's, this thing's real, but.
We just know that the last five years, more children have died from the flu than they've died from this. According to the CDC.
But we haven't been in school either. You know, we haven't had them all together to have them have the possibility.
And maybe we shouldn't have had them for the last five years.
No, we didn't have a limit going on the last five years.
I just also wanna point out too, this is the time when everybody's coming back for vacation, everybody's been everywhere and we're getting ready to put them under a roof. I mean, I think the flu is as bad as it is, not because of the climate, it's because we're all indoors and we're all together. And again, I just, I'm gonna leave all the medical stuff aside because I'm not a medical person, but I just feel that, you know, a 30-day starting school out, to me, it's not a big deal. I'm, you know, looking at other hurdles that the school's gonna have to overcome and, you know, that's where I'm at, but.
I just think we really need to be careful when we start telling parents what they have to do with their children because you're gonna start.
That's fine, but we also ask our, our parents to bring kids to school that are clothed properly, that are under certain hygiene. There is a list of requirements if they wanna bring their, their student to public school. And, you know, this isn't about taking freedom away from anybody. This is just a protective measure to try to keep our staff, personnel, our cooks, our cleaning people safe. And it just seems like a small price to pay for a 30-day window. And at the end of the 30 days, let's reevaluate it. It could be a totally different animal by then, I just.
What are the other schools in our county doing?
Well, the other schools, I think Timberlake met and discussed this over, at their last monthly meeting. So they, they made decisions last month with last month's information, which is why I think we were, I think, you know, I was glad to see us push this right before school started because this is the most current information right before school starts. And, you know what, we went from green to yellow. Things are not getting better, they are getting worse. That concerns me when, if somebody were to go down with something, I wanna know that I've done what I can do to prevent or at least try. I don't wanna have that on my conscience. But anyway, I was hoping enough, I'd like other people to discuss it and then, and then we'll try to come on and do some common ground and see what we can do.
I will tell you that Metro Superintendent told me that they were, he would, I don't know if they'd met that the recommendation was gonna be to go with masks, but as I said.
But what about, what is Timberlake and Burlington doing in our county?
I don't know what Burlington's doing, I don't, I don't know. That's a whole nother story. Timberlake, I believe, has not done a mandatory mask, I believe that. If I'm wrong, I'll let you know tomorrow. Enid has gone to an AD schedule where your kid is not gonna go to school. Every day they'll go, certain days if they're an A and certain days if they're a D. And I'm not sure what they've done about masks on that, but I do know that they've gone to an AD schedule. I think every school is doing like what we're doing right now, trying to figure out what's best for our community, for us. And it's not whatever Enid or Oklahoma City or anybody or Metro, like, it's not necessarily what would be best for us. And I'm glad that we have the opportunity to, to make that choice because we, we were green up until just a couple of weeks ago. But when you, when you, I just want us to stay in school. And I believe that if we do everything that we can to stay in school, the chances are better that we will. I do, I will share with you that, you know, watching other schools around the state that already started, there's one school that they didn't get to start with their start date because their teachers, when their teachers got it, then they had to quarantine. So they pushed their start dates and they've started now. The schools around then have closed because of COVID, whatever the dates are, 14 days or whatever. There's a school that started last Thursday in southeast Oklahoma. One of their child nutrition ladies tested positive with COVID. So today, they went distance learning for an undisclosed amount of time because all of the cafeteria ladies are gonna have to be quarantined. So, I mean, every, every case that we get is gonna be different and you have to deal with it differently. Not every case will close us down. But if we get it to where our teachers aren't able to be here because their children have it or they have it, that's gonna close us down. The question is, have we already purchased DPE? Yes, we did. We've purchased the regular mask, we've purchased the Gator and we have a regular mask that's a medical mask. Because even if the vote is to not mandate masks, we wanna have them available if anybody chooses to wear them. And then we will get more supplies from the governor as they come in. And we will have face shields also because we have kids that need to have a face shield.
I don't know a lot about these masks, are they washable, usable?
Yes, you can wash, you can rewash the masks that we have, except the, the blue medical, no, you can't do that. And we did buy the hazardous material boxes. So if somebody needs to throw one away during the day, they'll go into a hazardous, hazardous material box as opposed to just going into the regular trash can.
Any other discussion? I know we've all been grounded with a lot of information on both sides. I really think we've come together on something here tonight. If you've got any ideas, I'd be interested to hear what a motion would look like or sound like. If not, I've got one and we can see where it goes and then go from there. But I wanna give everybody else the opportunity. I feel like I get enough my time just because I've gotta moderate.
There's been a lot of talk, see, I mean, a lot of good discussion, good discussion. Appreciate that very much. You know, they've said, this is, this is kinda split down the middle. A lot of people here, and I'm not.
A lot of people here, and I'm not going to point anybody out specifically either, but I guess what I'm trying, is it me or is it this?
Try it again.
Try it again. There's been a lot of good discussion here this evening, and I appreciate that very much, uh, and I don't want to point anybody else out or point anybody out, but I will say that I've heard some very, very good educated people, and very, very, well, people that's been in the military a long time, have seen a lot of things, uh, and I just want to say that I appreciate, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate all of you for coming here and saying what's very important to our, to our children.
Amber? You're working on it? All right, I'll give you some time.
Do we know what kind of fiber count or what kind of material the masks that the students will be using, or, my real question is, how many microns do they filter? And how many will they filter after they've been washed a few times?
If, if If you allow me to answer that question tomorrow, I don't know that. And so, I can get that information for you, but I do not have that on hand. No science.
Just to remind, N95 surgical mask only, filtered through .3 microns. COVID-19 is .06 to .14, less than half the size of the filtration ability of the N95
So Curtis, you've been vocal, I mean, what, what would you like to see us do?
I would like people to have the option to wear the mask if they want to, and that way anybody that wants to wear a mask can, and people that don't want to wear a mask aren't forced to.
That's a good option. I'm not denying that. I just, you know, in my mind, I think there's more we could do.
I just don't think that masks are the difference maker. If, if masks are safe, then if we use them, nobody will get it.
What's that?
If masks are safe and we use them, nobody will get it. But people who wear a mask all are, and people are still getting it.
Right, but I think we also, uh, are blessed to live where we live, and I think we have a good opportunity to fight it more than, uh, a busier school, a busier city.
And putting all these people into a confined area and saying that the mask is going to keep them from getting sick.
No, I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't say that. I would say it would reduce.
Right.
And, and the micron levels, you know, it, to me, yeah, I may not get all of it, but it's going to reduce the amount coming out. I mean, it's, it may not catch it all, if that's the science behind the masks, and I don't know, um, but I would say you would still have a reduction.
Well, you will have a reduction, but you'll also have an increase in the amount of hands to face touching. I can't imagine how much more, but I would, I would
Right.
I would think it would be great.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could. I don't know. Donna was asking me if that was something that we could have Nikki, uh, address, if you'd be willing to, since you were on the agenda, uh, on the micron level, and you can just maybe shed some light on it.
He is exactly right, the size of it. It has to attach to a respiratory particle, which is saliva. It doesn't travel on its own. That's what that's trapping, and that's why I included that video from the American Academy of Thoracic Studies. Surgeons wear masks all the time, um, and none of us are asking them to take them off when they perform procedures on us. They've been used for centuries.
May I ask if those masks are to prevent dengue virus or bacteria?
Uh, they are for both, actually, sorry, yes, yeah. And I have provided, uh, links to several studies in regards to that. Um, many people have talked about how well Taiwan did, and, and again, it could be two studies that, um, face coverings. Their government provided these for every citizen, and their death rate is low. And you're absolutely correct. It is not going to stop it. But what those studies are showing is that it mitigates it, it reduces it, but people are still getting it and developing antibodies, but it's in a lesser, um, state. They're, they're mild cases. That's what we want. Uh, we don't want, and he is very correct on the children. Thank God. But they do transmit it to adults, and those are your teachers, and those are your workers.
Curtis, let me ask you this. If we were to do a 30-day mandate where social distancing couldn't be done for 30 days, calendar days, so that could be 18 days at school, I don't know, I'm just guessing. After the 30 days, if things look better, I would say I would be comfortable to go into your solution, which would be, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, and, and then leave it up to personal choices at that point. I'm kind of stuck where I am, because I feel like we're all have been places, and we are all coming back all at once, and if, if anytime we are at a high risk, it's going to be the first 30 days, and that's why I said that, just my
If I, if I may, uh, again, you were correct on your CDC, uh, numbers for flu, um, but we're looking at 605 deaths in Oklahoma so far from COVID. Granted, praise the Lord, not many of those are kids. I'm sorry?
What'd you say last?
Um, 605 deaths. I said, praise the Lord. Yeah, very few of those are children. Um, last year's flu, I, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at those packets, 85. The year before, 135. And one of those was from this county.
So the flu is killing more children so far than COVID-19?
Children.
Per year?
Um, I did not break down the flu deaths, but I can tell you that H1N1 deaths were much lower. It was less than a 1% mortality, and Oklahoma alone is sitting at 1.4, and we're only five months in. And we had an antiviral for that, and we had a vaccine that we were able to manipulate a little bit to cover that strain. We just don't. The two fastest-growing age groups that we're seeing are 18 to 35, this in Oklahoma. I, I haven't, anything I'm giving you is not U.S. numbers, I'm just talking about Oklahoma. So 18 to 35, fastest-growing number of cases, again, most of them are mild, and the second fastest-growing is 5 to 17. So, and those are, I mean, those are kids coming back to school. I, I just don't know how we can ignore that the American Academy of Pediatrics, your Oklahoma Academy of Pediatrics, your Oklahoma Academy of Family Physicians are all recommending this.
Thank you, Nikki.
Sure. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry, you have to make this decision.
I was just going to make a recommendation that, um, if all of the teachers choose to wear them, that's totally fine, but just make it a preference for the children. If they want to wear, if their parents want them, just want them to wear them, then okay, because I think you're still going to have some problems.
So you're saying, so your recommendation would be to, uh, basically give teachers free will and, and not require any students to wear any masks? Is that correct? What's that?
It would be their choice.
Yeah, personal choice.
If the teachers felt that they would be protected, then let them be protected, since the statistics are so low with the children.
Right.
And let it be the preference from the parents if they choose to send their child to school with a mask on or not.
Okay, let's do this. I think, uh, I think mine is probably the, the more intense or the more stringent, uh, recommendation. So, I'm going to call a motion, and we'll see what happens, and then if it doesn't pass, we'll go down a step. Does that seem fair? Does anybody have any, uh, other thing they'd like to say before I make a motion? I make a motion that for the first 30 days of school, that grade six through 12 wears masks for the first 30 days where social distancing cannot be required. Fifth grade will wear masks, one at the high school, and there'll be no masks below that. Does that make sense? Going to make me read it, I pulled it out of my head. My recommendation is that, uh, for the first 30 days of school, that students and faculty will wear masks where social distancing cannot be required or done properly, and, uh, after the 30 days, uh, we will reevaluate that. And that involves grades six through 12, and fifth grade when they're over at the middle of high school, and below that, uh, no masks.
Wouldn't be amended, the people that can't wear
Yeah, if, if somebody has a medical condition, if you have asthma, uh, if you have Uh, there's accommodations for That would be part of it, absolutely. We're not going to make somebody So again, I'll just give like, uh, I don't know, 30 seconds for a second, and then that motion will cease. Amber's seconded that motion. Judy, will you take, uh, roll?
Good one?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Little Bill?
Yes.
Gibson?
No.
Will Hi?
Motion passes. Number six, approval of the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on or any of all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following A through M.
Um, I would like to add an activity fundraiser request from charity, um, Mamita, she is on, and, uh, Kristy Snyder, they're going to do a physically rally, a rattle at the Cherokee rodeo, uh, to raise money for the eighth grade graduation upcoming, votes and strong on Day 3 of the 2021. So, uh, that would be an initiative, the activity, uh, I'm sorry, the activity fundraiser request.
Thank you. Any other questions concerned A through M?
Uh, we did have a resignation. Jane, we need you to resign because of not being able to come back with health, underlying health conditions and being around children, so she made the decision. Parkdale, both departed to one day to resign, and if any time we get to us, this COVID, um, and she, um, would like to come back and give a P, we would allow her to retire back.
She's been here a long time, she will be missed. Any other questions, uh, A through M? Amber's made a motion to approve, I'll second it. Judy?
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Wholeville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion of vote to provide free breakfast for certified and non-certified staff in school district for the 2021 school year.
Um, this is an item that we'll talk about every year, just to make sure that we're financially able to continue that. Uh, one of the things that happened with, uh, going to Seamus Summer is we were able to collect more per meal this summer, uh, um, weekly, uh, meals that we did, so we were able to, um, do some, we'll be able to do some things with our child nutrition money, like we're going to get a new freezer, a new walk-in freezer, because theirs is like all hung up done. It's going to get a new, um, door, we're getting a walk-in, but there is enough funding in child nutrition to accommodate pretty much the cost of the
Amber's made a motion. Desiree's second. Judy?
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Wholeville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Number eight, discussion vote to approve the 2021 ODCT contract for secondary career technology education programs.
That's just our contract to go, um, with our career tech programs. Um, they need that, uh, item in our minutes for their accreditation, so I recommend that we stick with the secondary career and technology education programs.
Motion to approve. Amber's second. Judy?
Will Hi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wholeville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion vote to approve the 11th and 12th grade mathematics and science courses taken from the Career Technology Center for the 2021 school year.
Um, our 11th and 12th grade students go over and they take math and science, and so in order for us to be able to transcript that, we have to approve the teacher and the coursework from the career tech, and so this is us proving that we will allow our children to take math and science and the career tech, and it will be transcribed and honor transcribed as a credit for graduation.
Questions, discussions on that? Amber's made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Amber's, or Desiree's second. Judy?
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Wholeville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
White?
Number 10, propose executive session to discuss the employment of personnel, so that the board may return to open session and vote to employ or find reason not to employ personnel pending background checks, 25 of us, 307, D1. I make a motion. Amber may need a second to convene into executive session. Judy?
Wholeville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hi?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Time is 9:21.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker? Wholeville?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Will Hi?
Yes.
Time?
During the executive session, we discuss the employment of personnel so that we can return to open session and vote to employ, find reason not to employ a separate member.
Thank you. And moving on to number 14, vote to employ or find reason not to employ the following personnel, uh, Delana Hangle and Christina Pereira.
Can I make a recommendation that we hire Delana and Christina? Christina worked for us a little bit in the cafeteria when we needed help this week. Uh, people out, she did a really good job for us, and Delana is, um, currently working for Bellamy, um, and, um, looking forward to coming to work with us.
Any other questions? Amber's made a motion to employ. Desiree's second. Judy?
Will Hi?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Wholeville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes. Number 15, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the, uh, middle school, high school handbag changes for the 2021. Yeah, just Way into the mic there. Okay. So I think you all have a copy of the full handbook. I tried to make uh some book notes for you on the changes. Tried to make that a little clearer. So I think you also have that. The biggest part of the changes in the handbook this year are just some references. Uh we just included those things mainly all around COVID and where those policies and things can be found in our return to learn plan on the website mostly um or in the high school office. Um so visitors, the first one there, the first change is just making the addition there that visitor policies may be affected by COVID nineteen safety protocols. Visitors should follow any measures posted for entry. Um and we will have those posted at the main entrance at the building there on the west side. Any questions about that? Pretty straightforward with that. Um we'll we'll kind of have just a check station there. There's still be required checking into kiosks like always. Um that's really about as far as they can go. We do though have some people that come in from time to time, whether it be from the crew tech or Northwestern. We may have a recruiter. Um so we're gonna make them come in, we'll check the temperatures, fill out the information sheets that we have in there. And as long as that's okay, then we'll kind of have those things pre-arranged and we'll limit, it won't just be like we used to where they set up in the foyer and everybody can just go down there. We'll try to set up some individual meetings and make sure that those are spaced out and taken care of. We have those types of visitors. Um the next one, under sickness, accident, or contagious disease. Um the policy used to say twenty-four hours. And everything that we discussed in our meetings, um it was recommending that it be forty-eight hours fever-free. And so we want to make sure and include that in there. So if we get a student that has that fever of a hundred point four or higher when they're sent home, they can't return to school uh for forty-eight hours uh being fever-free. So that was a small change and I um I think both handbooks, both buildings will will be the same there. Um and then COVID nineteen, I just kind of added a heading there, under sickness, again. Mainly references uh where those things can be found. Um so that we provide that information in the handbook. Distance learning, again, this is more of a reference. Um we will update our distance learning guide just like we put out in spring. And we're finalizing those. And that should be pretty well done tomorrow. We'll get that posted on the school website and make the distance learning guide uh available to everybody that way. Um personal appearance and dress code. So um even before the last board meeting, um Mr. Hickman and I have talked about this. Um and and so, I mean, I I have some questions now uh about this for you and would like some some input. The way that this would read is adding underneath the dress code that face masks designed for personal protection are allowed to be worn for medical reasons as recommended or required by school policy. These masks must be school appropriate and meet the standards of the dress code in regards to clothing. Well, thank you, Sam and Bryce. I'm having a little trouble hearing you two. I think my page numbers are cut off on this, so I'm not real sure. It's it's not too far in.
Curtis, in the very back of your packet, that is the sheet that you've read.
Can you turn Bryce's microphone up a little bit? I just need to talk into it more. Sorry, it's not right there. Okay, what page? I don't have the page number on here. It's cut off on the paper. It starts, there's a section about buses and then personal dress code appearance. That's where that starts. Go ahead. Okay, so the statement, like I said, the statement would read, face masks designed for personal protection are allowed uh if worn for medical reasons as recommended or required by school policy. And like I said, this was written before uh tonight's meeting, so we needed to be able to um adjust those either way there. Um but these masks must be school appropriate and meet the standards of the dress code in regards to clothing. Um and then in regards to clothing, uh there can't be anything uh you know, threatening uh with vulgar language um as it's outlined. There says no clothing with vulgar lettering pictures or any windows will be allowed. Um
So that's what you're asking for, is the clarification on what you should say? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, I'm asking if this is okay to put in there to say. And now I'm asking is do we feel that this now, this mandate falls underneath a dress code issue? If we're gonna require a face mask to be worn, we have, if that's refused to do or refused to do incorrectly, how am I gonna discipline that? What policy am I gonna refer to to back me up? To me, it's a dress code issue. Yeah, I would just state it as a dress code issue and and uh follow the the same guidelines as if it was a you know, somebody showed up in too too short shorts. Right.
Maybe not, could it be your handbook, but put it in as a separate sheet? Because in thirty days, it may change.
Right.
And so it may just need to be an insert of that because it's worldly, important, and we're needed here. I'd give you a dress code. I I really don't know that you wanted to go to crime.
Okay, that's that's what I'm asking. Because if it does, then I want it approved and put in there tonight. As I said, I believe it's a dress code and I just, I want everybody to understand what our dress code policy indicates as consequences for this. So the first offense, a student is removed from the class until the situation is corrected. And and we have to do that. So they come out, sometimes it's turning their shirt inside out. And then they get right back to class. We don't want to keep them out of class any longer than they have to. If there's a second offense, could be the same day, could be the next day, could be a week later. We track that, we document those with those students. Second offense uh is a class one corrective action. And in our discipline policy, what that is, is a conference with the parent. Um and whether it be in person, on the phone, and possible one-day in-school suspension. That's class one offense. So that's what that refers to for the dress code. A third offense refers to a class two corrective action, which is a one-day out-of-school suspension. So um I'm asking if this, the face mask and what we're doing, if that needs to fall underneath our dress code. And not, if this isn't something that we can talk about right now, you just have to tell me. But since we're approving the handbook and we're starting on Friday, I mean, um You know, it's not a disciplinary action, really. I mean, it's not like they uh we've set a guideline that they choose not to follow. And and if they uh don't want to follow it, then then they'll have to have an alternative way to get their education. Um as far as the process goes, as far as what route and how severe each one is yet, I I don't know. You know, it's it's it would be easy to mark it under dress code because we've already got everything established, but I I kind of think it's a different animal. Well, no, I I think if you I'm just kind of trying to play devil's advocate here, but if you have a kid that has no reason to not wear the mask over the knee, just does not want to wear the mask. Um can he come up with an excuse on the fly? It's difficult for me to breathe today with it on. What's that? Can he come up with, can the student come up with an excuse on the fly? Like say, say the student will wear the mask in class and so the teacher says, put the mask on. The student says, no. So they call the administrator in the room and the student says, well, I I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to breathe very well. Normally I can, but right now I can't. So I'm not gonna wear it. I don't know. We can't force somebody to put, when you start wanting people to do things, is that, ever heard of the ACLU? No. So, I mean, what do we do? What do the students say?
I think if someone tells you they can't breathe, you say, okay.
So hopefully the students don't take, gain the system and just say, well, anytime I don't want to wear a mask, I don't feel like I can breathe really well without a mask right now.
I feel like.
That that's how, that's why I felt like using the dress code, the consequences, it would give me an opportunity in that in that scenario to remove that kid from the classroom. Maybe we go to my office and we can try to resolve the issue. So I mean, if that's what he's saying, and if we don't get a, if we don't get it resolved, then I'll call a parent and handle it like I would another issue if I can't resolve the dress code issue. I just, I I need some guidance because these things will happen. And and I have to refer to the handbook as as our decision-making when dealing with these things. And so I need to know. Well, I mean, I would give control back to your your teachers. And if they have a student that is, you know, if the teacher uh saying that social distancing cannot be done right now and wear, required to wear a mask, and if you are unable to wear a mask, um I would say to be forced to leave the classroom.
And then the first step to that is, what you said, the first uh consequence is that?
Well, they don't return to the classroom until the problem's corrected.
Okay. So in that time period, you have the opportunity to figure out what the situation is, like, like you said. And you will know that if they can't breathe, okay, well, let's let's leave this mask on off for for a little bit. Let's let you get back tomorrow and see if you can drive in. I think that that gives you the opportunity to have some grace with the mask. Now, if you, here's the other department, and this has happened to me. By the time I get to the point where I'm gonna call the parent, the parent says, you know what? I told him not to do it. I I told him to pop that kid in the face because he wouldn't leave him alone. We'll take the suspension call. So I think you're gonna make me see some of that too, because I've already seen that there are kids that are are the home is, the home decision is, we don't want to wear a mask. So the kid has already been, okay, I don't want to wear my mask either. So you're gonna get a little pushback from not just the kid or the parent. I would just say, follow, I would say, follow your mask rule, your clothing rule, because it is a piece of clothing. It does fit in there. It gives you an opportunity to get it fixed without really a consequence.
Okay, so going back to the statement, the the reason behind that is I've seen lots of masks out there with some pretty vulgar things on there and some things that will incite some other problems. So that was really my intent with it, is to keep away from that. I'm not saying they have to wear that school-provided one, but it can't say some of the things I've seen on. I would say just like anybody wears a T-shirt, I mean, you're not gonna allow somebody to wear something that is extremely offensive to another group. Um you know, if it's appropriate for school or it's either not, and just, you know, run it that way. So the statement that I have written here, is this, is this okay with everybody? Can we approve this statement? Is this? Go ahead, read it, Bryce. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the. Face masks designed for personal protection are allowed if worn for medical reasons as recommended or required by school policy. These masks must be school appropriate and meet the standards of the dress code in regards to clothing. I don't, sounds good to me. Any other board members have any? Well, if it just has to meet the standards of the dress code, then you could wear a mask made of anything, which might really do nothing. You could wear a fishnet mask over your face. It's just a, a. Can't wear fishnets. Can't wear fishnets according to dress code. So I, my references are to. Old items that are smaller than fishnets. Well, I don't, my references are to uh wording and images and things like that. That's the intent of this. Right, but Curtis is saying, how do we make sure that they are not wearing any appropriate masks that actually does something? Right, they can be wearing a mask that doesn't violate any school policy, but is still not inhibiting any kind of bacteria or anything like that. You know, you can wear a very the word mask is a very loose interpretation and it will be stretched, I'm sure, by the students. I mean, we could stay in there that the mask has, you know, whatever the uh the micron levels are. Maybe that's where the school-approved mask. Something, something like that. Okay, so we wanted to add that one. And I would say any school-approved. School-appropriate and school-approved. Right. School-appropriate, school-approved, and um you know, it's gotta it's gotta be an actual, you know, agent that filters, you know, I mean, the masks we bought, they they are.
They specify PPE, because they're not getting somebody to come in, like a Halloween mask. Right. Yeah, PPE does need to be in there.
Yeah, designed for personal protection.
Yeah.
I got that in there already. Good job. Okay. Okay. Okay, the um the next one, uh semester test. This is a conversation that we started with the department heads um back in May. And for the last couple of years, we've had a requirement that all students will be required to take semester tests seventh through twelfth grade after visiting with our department heads. Um and going back through and just kind of reviewing some attendance information and the amount of testing that we're doing now. We just, we felt like that policy really wasn't achieving what the intent was when we changed it. So what we would like to do is go back to um the exemption policy, which is if you have an A and three absences or fewer, you're exempt, a B and two, you're exempt, a C and one, you would be exempt. I went into more detail after that. And uh clarifying that the three tardies in any class period will eat one absence. That is part of our attendance policy anyway. Um but just making sure that everybody would understand that it would apply to that semester test policy. Um we discussed, a lot of times, um we have students that are on the borderline. You know, maybe they have an eighty-eight, eighty-nine. Um we would like to have that option, that a kid could take that at no risk. With the, with the idea that if they do well on that test, they can improve their grade. If they don't do well on that test, if they're not required to take it, I mean, back up there. If they were exempt and they had the choice to take that test to raise their grade and they did not get the score that they need to do that, the test score would be waived. So it would be at no risk for those not required to take the test. Is that clear?
I like that.
I stumbled around on that.
I hear a lot of positive reinforcement in that whole policy. Um you know, giving students the opportunity to not test because they, you know, been here. And then giving them the opportunity to test to raise a grade, but it would not harm them. I think there's a lot of positive reinforcement in that.
The the next statement on here is that students must be enrolled for the entire semester to be considered exempt. Any student transferring in during the semester will be required to take all semester tests.
What what's your thinking behind that?
Well, we have a lot of students that, I say a lot of students, a lot of the students that we get that transfer in, we don't get very accurate attendance records. Or the attendance records that we get, they were, it was very poor attendance. But I see a lot of time, we get them and they and they do well, or you know, maybe their attendance was good and then all of a sudden it's not. There's just not a lot of consistency there. And it seems like um after October is when we seem to get a lot of, a lot of new students. Um and so we're already nine weeks in. Um this is just, this is a statement out of another school's policy that I read, kind of liked it, thought about some of the situations that we've had in the past. Um and I think that, um you know, I think that it would help us get a little more um backing, trying to get those kids to move in to to get caught up. So that, I mean, that's that's my reasoning behind that, that part of it. Okay, uh this is part, the next part here, um semester tests must be taken on the scheduled testing day. If a student is to be absent on the scheduled testing day, arrangements must be made by the student one week in advance with each teacher. with each teacher to test early or test on the first available day upon return. A zero will be given for the test grade if not completed on the arranged day. Exceptions can be made for emergency situations beyond the control of the student. We schedule test dates at the beginning of every school year. We know what our semester tests are going to be. Parents know when they are. And we just, we have a lot of kids that decide to leave two days early for Christmas break. And it causes a lot of problems for the teachers because now we have to come back and figure out if we can give that, a kid a test after they've been on break for two weeks. So we've really, we've had this in there for a while when we're required to do the testing. I think it has helped out a lot. So I would like to leave that part in there so that we can get those things arranged. And it may be that they can test early, but it's up to the students to arrange those things.
That's what I was going to say is, it'd be nice to have a little bit of a grace period maybe before. I'm not sure what, what the cons are from doing that. I mean, are you worried about information getting out to the other students? Or is it just a logistical?
No, it's more beneficial for the student to take that test before they leave for break.
Right, I understand.
And that's what we're trying to make sure happens.
But if they can't make it on that day and they can make it two days prior than the test day, is that a big deal?
No, hasn't been. We don't have a lot of kids, but it really does, once it does affect that have to come back and try the test after break, they don't do well.
Right, I understand.
So we're trying to encourage, making sure that there is that opportunity.
Before.
Yeah. Last one here, semester tests will not count more than ten percent of the total semester grade. So we kind of want to put a cap on that. I'm not saying that those semester tests could be worth less than that. We just don't want to put more than ten percent. And really, ten percent is not a lot over the course of the semester. But we felt like for consistency reasons, we need to put a cap on that. And that's what we discussed in May was ten percent. Everybody felt like that was pretty fair. And that's what it was when we were requiring everyone to take it, it was ten percent. So we felt like that was pretty good. The last one here, I, I put in here, obviously, as things are changing daily, that semester test may be waived by the school administration in circumstances beyond our control that the students and the district create an academic disadvantage to those students required to take the test. If we have to go to distance learning and we get on this roller coaster of we're in school or out of school, we're in school or out of school, the way attendance is going to be taken, it will have to be taken whether we're in school or out of school. But there are so many unknown factors out there that I don't want to lock us into something. I feel like this year, and this may just be at one time, we may not need this next semester. But if we have that option to sit down and really discuss if we need to waive semester tests for all students, if that would be possible. So I felt like putting this statement in, in the handbook there gives us that option.
Can I address the previous point on the, this, the finals being worth only ten percent? Did you say the teacher got together with you and that they, they picked that number?
The department heads, yeah. Our, so our previous policy when seventh through twelfth all had to take them, they were all worth ten percent.
The teachers don't want their own discretion?
This would give them that. They did have that.
Some could make it five, some could make it ten, some could make it fifteen.
Not, no, the way this would read is that it cannot be more than ten percent. But it could be less, but it's up to the teacher, it just can't be more than ten.
And the teacher's not, the teachers were okay with not being able to make it fifteen?
Yes, yeah.
But with the stipulation that they couldn't change it based on these two?
Right.
Ten percent, you could, your whole class would have it.
Yeah, and I think those things, those things I think normally are going to be in those syllabus at the beginning of the year. So, so you'll know going in what that semester test at the end of the semester is going to be worth for each of those classes. Last thing on the handbook, it's just another reference. Because our attendance policy with COVID and those things is, is a little bit different. We've granted them some extra days and some things. And then the way that we have to record attendance, if it's a positive case directly related to COVID, is a little bit different than if they're just not feeling well, but it's not COVID related. So, again, it's just a reference that for COVID-19 circumstances, we'll follow the Cherokee College School's policy on absences due to COVID-19. And then I, I put in there to clarify that absences counted during distance learning periods will count towards a student's attendance record. So if we get put on distance learning and we have a system in place to take attendance daily for each class, but that would count as normal attendance. Those are, those are all of the changes, additions to the handbook for this year.
I'm delighted that Draymond and Haley are on with Hill School High School. So would you do this for me? Would you present your changes in your principal's report? And that way everybody can hear them and have a discussion about it. One of the facilities we voted on, but usually the changes that we talk about, if there needs to be a change, we can do it in the next board meeting and we'll be getting your handbook out.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Bryce. Number sixteen, discussion vote to approve the library statutory waiver deregulation for library K through twelve for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Back up fifteen, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the high middle school, high school handbook change for the twenty-twenty-one year. Look for motion to approve. Analysts made a motion. Does a red second, Judy.
Red one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Little Bell?
Yes.
Getson?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Didn't have it myself, sorry. Number sixteen, discussion vote to approve library statutory waiver deregulation for library K twelve for the twenty-twenty-one for Haley and Cutmore.
We can have a three-year statutory waiver from the library. We have three years statutory waiver from the library. But with the way that the State Department handles those, and especially with the State Department being a majority of them are on, working at home, I don't want to not do this. And this is one of those, understand and sorry items. So what it is, is that Haley has got three years to get her library science because she is going on alternative certification. And so for those years, we just have to apply for a deregulation out of the library so that we can run our library with someone who is going through the process of getting library science from another degree. So the approval will just be for the statutory waiver.
Motion to approve.
Curtis made a motion, now a second, Judy.
Red one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Little Bell?
Yes.
Getson?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Number seventeen, discussion vote to approve adjunct teaching status for the twenty-twenty-one for Brooke Meyer and Lindy Cutmore.
Brooke Meyer is the anatomy physiology teacher at Long West Tech Center. We have to approve that she is going to adjunct teach for us for the science classes over there and so that we can credit them on our transcripts for graduation. And then Lindy does not have anatomy on her certification, but you can adjunct a teacher for an hour outside of their teaching certification area. And so we're going to do that for Lindy for one hour of anatomy. She's taught that before.
Question.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Curtis, second, Judy.
Red one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Little Bell?
Yes.
Getson?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
So she taught it with longer certification?
She has, without the actual taking of the test and having it on her certificate, she decides she should just like that.
Number eighteen, principals reports.
I didn't want any major changes in my handbook. I just added the little statements like Bryce had in her high school one about absences will count during COVID if we go to distance learning. And they could count, could have a negative effect if they don't do their studies. So grades and attendance will be counted. So I've added that statement in there. And then just changing the fever policy to forty-eight hours. So those are really the only changes I made in my handbook. And then we had a pretty productive day. The teacher's back, hundreds and hundreds of questions, no answers. But we're working on our distance learning plan. Everybody's got a good positive attitude and we're going to carry that over into the students. So we get off on the right foot with that. I did check my attendance today. I'm down about three students right now, but I have lost several, but gained some new ones. And I have a smaller three-year-old class coming in, so down three's not too bad at this point in time. And the only other thing besides getting back in the classroom is next Friday, the twenty-first, we have our countywide teachers meeting scheduled on dyslexia. And we're going to do that. I'll, or Cherokee's teachers are going to do here, the others are going to do in Park Trail with us. So we'll Zoom or Google Meet with them. They'll hear the president that way, so that's all I have for that one, Mr..
If I know it's going to be this way, I'm going to try to shorten this up a little bit, but I'll try to get through this pretty quick. Softball, cross-country, football, we all began practices today. Well, football is today. Cross-country and softball, then practice them for a couple of weeks now. We all have really good participation numbers. Kids are ready to get back and get after it. Softball, they have fourteen out in junior high, fifteen in high school. Cross-country, Coach Prude has sixteen boys and girls running the elementary division, nine in the junior high, and thirteen in the high school. And as of right now, we've got twenty-eight out for high school football. And we'll know junior high and elementary numbers, but those are usually anywhere from fifteen to twenty each year. So I expect that to probably be about the same. Softball, played their first game today and won eleven to two. They beat Seminole. And junior high and high school play here, well, maybe, I guess, Phil Chice out now. Tomorrow at four-thirty against Cremona Hillsdale. Let me ask you this question. There's several things that we're trying to do in the sports area with the locker and the teams to take some precautions. Would you like to hear some of those? Do you want to know those things? Yeah, good. I'll, I'll try to go through them pretty quick. So we've talked about a lot of those things. Where each athlete is required to provide their own water bottle or water jug to practice and make sure that they have that with them every day. We have a coach that will get the ice out of the ice machine and fill those up so that they're not going in there and doing those things. We don't have a community water jug that we're drinking out of and doing that. So we're taking that, that step there. In the field house, what we've done is we've put juniors and seniors, every other locker, on the high school side with freshmen and sophomores between them. And then we're alternating times that they go in and they get dressed. So juniors and seniors may go in, they've got ten minutes, they get dressed, they go, they get out on the field, and they'll start doing some throwing, snapping, some things like that. While the freshmen and sophomores are waiting outside, some are waiting junior high side, and they go in and they can get dressed. The goal is, we, we've, we've got it figured out over there that we won't all be in the locker room at the same time. So there, there shouldn't be any time that we do that. Ballgames, halftime, or staying outside on the east end, we've got a place that we can go. If it's raining, we can go inside the barn. And we can still space out and do those things. So just trying to do that, keep them spaced out as much as possible. Equipment's being sanitized very early. And we're trying to social distance as much as possible and just stay spread out as much as we can. Obviously, there's times that you just can't avoid it. The kids have been great in regards to that. No complaints whatsoever. All the boys, yes, last night had a meeting with them, went over some things, told them we're going to do everything we can to stay in school and to get out on the field and play. I can tell you right now, those kids are, they're all in and they'll listen to us. And I don't expect any problems there. Couple other things, we have Miss Cherokee. Last week, last Thursday, it went very well. I thought all the participants did a great job. We used Word, so we were able to watch that live stream. Kennedy Hester was crowned junior Miss Cherokee. Calista Sutter was crowned Miss Cherokee. And Madison Wheeler was crowned Miss Cherokee High. And Lacey Hodder is the one that's in charge of that, and she does an excellent job with that and is really doing some things to help promote and grow that event for our young ladies here at Cherokee. Like Ruth said, our teachers worked back today. We had meetings this morning briefly, and then they went to their classrooms. They're still working on distance learning, getting their classes ready. Just seeing what they can do as far as spacing out and doing all those things inside of their rooms. We had department meetings here in this building last week, working towards developing our distance learning for when and if we have to go to those things to make that more efficient and more consistent. It will obviously look a little bit different than it was in the spring because it's required. It's not just voluntary. Jessica Schonbacher came over from Northwest Tech and volunteered her time. Came over four different times, four days, and helped all of our teachers with Google Classroom. She's also coming back tomorrow and going to do some follow-up training. Amanda Tucker has been working very hard to get the devices ready to be checked out to our students and make sure that the teachers and the students have all the right tools, add-ons, equipment, and things that we're going to need in case distance learning takes place. So really appreciate her. Mrs. Jordan and some of our other high school teachers have worked extremely hard on getting everybody enrolled into classes and splitting those classes up as much as possible to try to keep our numbers pretty even and keep them down in each class. Obviously, we have some limitations and some classes are just big. I think our sophomore class has thirty-seven kids in it. So, you know, getting numbers low in some of their core classes is just really difficult to do. But she did a great job with that. And then finally, I want to mention that Heather Gutch has begun her term as the state president for the Oklahoma Association for Teachers for Family and Consumer Sciences. In addition to that term, she will also serve on the executive committee of the Oklahoma Association of Career and Technology Education and will be a voting member of the Crete Tech Administrative Council. So we've got some excellent, excellent teachers that are doing some things all across the state and representing us really well. So I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Bryce. Any other board members?
No, I think everything was said.
Number nineteen, superintendent's report.
We did, we started today. I know that it's, probably did create, for every question we answer, it creates a hundred more with the circumstances that we have going on. But as everyone said, the teachers are really excited to be back. I know the kids will be really excited to be back. We have two free hotspots that are going to be at the AEC old building. And then we have a free hotspot at the complex. So if we do go distance learning, there'll be some people who have, can have internet for free if they want to just go over there and, and hook onto that internet. We are just going to take it day by day. We're going to. We're going to, um, keep, keep watching and just try to stay in school and, and do some good things for the kids. Um, and then that, we're, I think everybody's ready to come back.
And now we're getting to my favorite one, new business? No new business. Number twenty-one, hammer's made a motion to adjourn. Are you sure? Okay, Desiree second, is that, get that in there, Judy.
Why?
Yes.
Getson?
Yes.
Little Bell?
Yes.
Parker? Getson?
Yes.
Yes.
Redwin, sorry.
Yes, can you third?